Oh, yeah.
It's not downtown except food and crafts.
It's the growing seeds.
On Saturday morning?
Yeah.
Gosh, I believe it alive.
We're live.
No, it's from eight to twelve.
Dan said you were to think it went from ten AM to eleven on the Facebook. I told her I said they couldn't get people. Takes long that to set up.
Yeah, no, I think it's probably nine to one. Um, but.
Does it last long then?
We didn't organize that.
Oh, you didn't?
That's growing seeds to that. Oh, no.
You did?
A new little, um. The area for, um, so it's basically a lot of like kids activities and stuff like that. But, yeah, she's quite the program.
I've talked to some of them down at that new section and they're really nice and interesting.
Oh, right.
They said they need to get the people to have the buildings fixed up, to fix stuff. I told her I'd be down there. She said, "You used to be in Bell Fountain," and they had a good work. See if I can get over to that and bring it in for us.
And then, um, yeah, that, we've talked to that guy several times. Um, and it's an excellent program. And now that there's the Westwood Collective kind of buying up a lot of the old crap, things are a little closer to that style of rejuvenation. Um, but, yeah, there are some in there that just, the one right next to the theater, for example.
Like the guy who bought the ones that I think was named right now. He wanted to buy the bar and all that, then the rest of them down there, but they wouldn't sell us free to close the bar. But he would do that. He'd glad something's in there.
You guys ready?
We're ready.
Call to meet in order. Everybody could please stand for the pledge allegiance in the moment of silent reflection, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, could we have roll call, please?
President Peters?
Here.
Councilman Eads?
Here.
Councilman Hayes?
Present.
Councilman Hitt?
Here.
Councilman McDaniel?
Here.
Councilman Norman?
Here.
Councilman Stahl?
Present.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Here.
All right, did everybody get a chance to take the minutes from August fifteenth? Any corrections or concerns?
I know I sent just a quick thing that Civic Plus wasn't in there correctly. I believe somebody else may have done that also, and Burke said it's all corrected.
Yep.
So beyond that, I have nothing.
All in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Uh, public hearings, there are none. Uh, communications announcements, none. Audience concerns, none.
Wow.
Uh, on to, uh, committee reports. Greg?
Uh, Finance Committee, next meeting is going to be Monday, the ninth, at five thirty. Uh, we're going to be discussing the fire department's current budget and how much they may need to augment, be augmented for the remainder of 2024. Uh, this correlates with Resolution 123 dash twenty-four that originally had $600,000 on it. We can amend that when it comes back up. So I've asked the, uh, the auditor and the fire chief both, um, to look at their information and come to the meeting, uh, on the ninth.
We're at.
Public Service, uh, the tenth, five o'clock, next door, and Public Safety, six, next door. Same day.
Rich?
Uh, Public Safety, uh, he mentioned it. Uh, that's all I got.
Andy?
I have nothing.
Shannon?
Nothing.
Nothing.
John? Mike?
Nada.
All right, on to city official reports.
Uh, don't really have much to report, except I do, um, want to make mention that the council and council clerk office is now finished and it's ready. Your key fobs have been coded such that it allows you in that room. Um, also, your key fobs will allow you to come in any door, the front, the alleyway, or this back door that you've always had access to. You'll be able to come into those doors, uh, virtually any day of the week from eight to eight. Um, only difference, only thing I will say is it'll only unlock the door and let you in. It does not unlock the building. So if you're meeting somebody here, either have them text you and so that you know to come and let them in, or meet them outside, and you come in at the same time. That way, when you leave, the doors will automatically be locked and everything will be fine.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Good evening. Thanks, everyone, for coming out and everyone watching. We did meet with representatives from ORD USDA, which is Ohio Rural Development, U.S. Department of Agriculture, about the loan application for the new police building. We are finalizing some information they need for the loan and hope to have final approval soon. We are also in the midst of environmental study on the land and working through those steps. I had a roundtable discussion. I was invited to have a roundtable discussion with some of the business owners in downtown who rent from Westwood Collective. Um, it was a great meeting, talking about the future of downtown, how to increase foot traffic, and what support the city can provide to the historic downtown. Um, I made a suggestion that hopefully at some time in the near future, we could have a very large meeting with all the business owners, probably host it here, and try to get on the same page and, and just move downtown forward. There will be an event this weekend, speaking of downtown, um, on Saturday beginning at ten AM. The London Downtown Market will be hosting thirty-five vendors, food trucks, bounce house, magic show, and highlight businesses on South Main Street. The event will be held on South Main Street from second to the train tracks. Um, it should be a good time, and I look forward to making it down there for some Saturday fun. Hartzler's Dairy will be having their soft opening on September twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth from two to eight PM each day. They will be located at twenty-two South Main Street. Just a very exciting time for our historic downtown as more businesses are coming in and going to bring some more foot traffic and keep adding to the vibrance of that downtown area. Um, I know it's still September, but they are already planning for Old Fashioned Christmas. Um, Eve is helping out with that a little bit in her spare time and keeping us kind of informed about that, and it sounds like it's going to be a wonderful event. They have a lot of things that they're looking to do for Old Fashioned Christmas. This past Tuesday, I had the honor of swearing in Officer Manville for the London Police Department. I would like to congratulate Officer Manville on his graduation from the academy and welcome him to the City of London. It seemed like September first hit, and we started receiving questions right away about trick or treat, so I did put out a post about that. Um, our trick or treat will be held on Halloween this year, which is Thursday, October thirty-first, from six PM to eight PM with no alternate, alternate date. Um, I know that citizens are sometimes worried about the weather, so I encourage them to attend some of the trunk or treats that will be leading up to the thirty-first. As these start coming in, I will be posting them on my mayor Facebook page. If a group is hosting a trunk or treat, please reach out to me and I'll help that, help them get the word out on that. I believe last year, just within the city limits, there were over a dozen trunk or treats leading up to trick or treat night. So plenty of opportunities to show off the costumes, plenty of opportunities to grab some candy. Next Friday, London City Schools will be celebrating Lemonade Day. This day is set aside to honor Mrs. Carol Daniels, who was a teacher and a principal at London Elementary School. Uh, she was a staple in this community and also at the school. I had the honor of knowing her, and her memory will live on, especially on Lemonade Day. The Molo Fun Fact is a number two hundred and thirteen. That is a total number of people who showed up for the Free Swim Sunday event at London Municipal Pool on September first. We had a meeting with the Parks and Rec Department and came up with the idea to kind of give back to the community and open the pool up for its last day for free. Besides free admission to the pool, we had free cookout for everyone who attended, serving hot dogs, chips, pickles, and water. The event was a lot of fun, and everyone really seemed to enjoy themselves. It was great that we were able to keep the pool open until September. I, I've been with local government for a while. Heck, I used to work at the pool when I was in high school, so, and I cannot remember the last time that we were able to keep the pool open until September. I mean, it's pretty amazing to be able to do that. I mean, Mother Nature definitely helped, but them trying to figure out and navigate, uh, schedules of lifeguards who are usually high school kids and some college kids, and as they're going back to school and sports and getting ready to head back to college, and being able to navigate that and get the lifeguards there so we could continue to keep that open was just really amazing. So overall, it's a great pool season. I've received a lot of compliments about the cleanliness, the atmosphere, and the staff as a whole. So I would like to thank that department and all the employees of the pool for a very, very successful year at London Municipal Pool. So with that being said, does anyone have any questions for me? Questions about anything, legislation? Any questions? Go ahead, sir.
I would make a recommendation from this time forward that we keep the pool open those extra couple of weeks. I've heard fantastic reviews about it, and everybody's happy about it, and I think we need to do that.
Yeah, I, it is fantastic, but like I said, it, it always comes down to the lifeguards. That's what it always comes down to, is who you have on staff at that time, because without lifeguards, you really can't do much besides open up the splash pad. Um, but, so you never know year to year who's going to be there, who's on the football team, who's on the volleyball team, how many college kids you have, what their schedule is, what their vacation schedule is, but I can tell you, you know, people were kidding with us about the last day, and if you saw our post, we said, "No, we're serious this time. It's the last day for the Free Swim Sunday," because it'd be like, you know, we were going to shut down on a day, and then we got together and was like, "It's going to be ninety all next week." And so they kind of scrambled and said, "How many lifeguards can we pull together and stay open while it was that crazy hot week at the, at the end of August?" So, but, yeah, I mean, I would love to stay open until, you know, September, close to Labor Day, but it always does come down to, to lifeguards is the biggest thing. Yeah. Councilman Norman?
I got two questions. You already answered one. Um, the first one is, uh, are there any plans to modify the comprehensive plan list to include more citizens or to take off those that are representative multiple times? Are we going to change that list at all? Are we, are we, you know, are we settling down and we're just going to go with that first initial list?
Currently, we're going with that first initial list. Um, in the email, I did say that if, if there was council members I'd like to serve, I would pass that information on to OHM. I heard from no one that, that email was sent about a week ago.
What about, what about citizens? What if they're interested in sitting on it? What's the process there?
So we are, so, so there's a steering committee, there's a couple other committees, and then we hired Morpsy to come in and do the citizen outreach. And so I'll.
Hold on. Let me just, let me pull out the schedule, because I got the schedule, the OM, OHM or OMH, I always get them confused. So by the time the public is involved, that's phase three. We've, there's only five phases. So we've got two phases that we're going to go through before we actually involve the community. Um, some of these phases, like in phase two, where I'm concerned is, phase two, two point two, there's a driving and walking tour. There's a driving and walking tour. My concern is, if we don't have, uh, and then, and this is why in my email, I said I'd like to see a citizen, which, of course, your response was, "There is a citizen representative for every ward." Dr. Kramer, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
But let's be, let's, let's be honest here. Our average household income here in town is $56,000, and I would say that all four of those people that represent those wards are way above that. They're not really representing the average citizen there. They're making way above that amount. And the other, the other issue I have with that is, like I'm saying with the driving and tour, the walking tour, I think someone who lives in the districts and someone who tries to maneuver through the district is more of an everyday person. I think, and, and I think to get an accurate, you know, representation of what we need to fix and where we need to fix it, we're going to hear that more from the citizens than we are from a, a, a driving and walking tour based on the list that you have. I, 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 you know, I strongly request that we add some more citizens onto that list that aren't.
How many more citizens would you, how many people would you like on, on these committees? Because the thing is, is that you want to keep it at, at a decent, smaller amount, right? So you can get things done. You don't want to have a hundred people in here, um, trying to do it. So how many citizens would you like?
Well, I would at least go back through the list and let's take off the.
No, you said you wanted citizens. How many citizens would you like? That's your request.
As I said, I would at least like four. One to represent each, each of the wards.
So there is a representative from each ward?
Again, the ones that you list on here.
How, how do you know how much these people make? I know a couple are public figures. One's retired, um, and then there's other people, the, the list itself, I mean, if you want to tell me how much each of them make, that, that, that'd be pretty amazing, but there are people that definitely don't make as much as other people do. You guys know how much I make. I don't, I, I make about the average income of the, of the local that you were saying. So how many citizens do you want? You want four? You want four more? You want me to pass on four more people?
I would say four more citizens that aren't connected to an entity or a, or a government or work for the city.
Everybody's going to be connected to it.
Everybody's connected to something, a non, the people that, that are on that list, you know, I'll show you my resume. I probably sit on ten, twelve boards, right? So all these people sit on multiple things. They didn't know these people from Adam, so what I did was I put that on there to give them a background of who they were and what they do. So if they were retired, I just put citizen down. Some of them are retired, and I still wrote what they did.
Right.
In, in the past. So to find somebody who is not affiliated with any nonprofits, not, doesn't have a job, right? You want them to not have a job.
Well, I don't care if they have a job. Here, they.
Then they're affiliated.
They're affiliated with what? They can live here but work somewhere else and have a job. But just because they live here don't, doesn't mean they work here.
You can sign me up, Mr. Mayor. I'll serve on one of them. Kids and grandkids.
But again, but again, what I'm saying is, if you look at the list, at least go back, and let's take some of the, some of the repeated, do we really need two people from Westwood Collection on there? They've got one guy. He can't talk to the other guy and say, "This is what happened."
There's one guy from Westwood Collective.
There were two, so you may have changed it, but there were two.
I'd have to go back and look. There's one person from Westwood Collective. Cole Antle was from Westwood Collective.
No, there's two listed on your email. So unless you went back and changed it.
Well, some people say no. Some people said no. I mean, it was an overwhelming, a lot of people that said yes.
Well, but I asked you for the list, and you gave me the list. So I went by the information you gave me. So if you gave me the wrong information, you know, I can only go by what you, the administration, gives me.
Okay, well, if you, if you would like to send me a list of four.
You have it. You sent it to me.
Okay, can I finish my sentence before you interrupt me? If you would like to send me a list of four citizens that you think should serve on it, I will send that on to OHM. Please send me their email address also.
But here's my question, Mr. Mayor. Why wasn't this, why didn't, why didn't the city, the administration, automatically put out a call for citizens interested in serving on this? We have a lot of citizens out there that aren't affiliated with our city, that do have skills and do have suggestions and do have ideas.
I completely agree. That's why we're bringing Morpsy in.
So who made, who made the list, Mr. Mayor?
We made the list internally.
You did make the list?
Yes.
Well, your executive assistant says, "No, you didn't. You didn't make the list."
I made the list and passed it on, and then they told me who they wanted off that list and asked me to give them, I gave them the full list.
So you created the list, the administration?
I told you that.
Exactly, and that's why I'm asking why there was no, no public announcement to say, "Hey, we're putting this together." Do you want to be involved? I mean, that's the whole purpose of the comprehensive study, is that we do what the citizens want us to do, and if you're not putting the citizens on there.
We are including the citizens.
Or a good representation of the citizens on there.
We are including the citizens.
So the list is going to stay, my, my question was, the list is going to stay the way it is. Is that correct?
I ju, I just asked you to send me four people with their contact information, and I will pass it on to OHM. I, I just said that.
You'll pass it on? So what does that mean?
It is their ultimate decision on who's going on the list.
And I asked you, does OHM work for us, or do we work for them?
Well, here, here's the thing, Mike. This is administration's job to do that. Us as council, that's not our job to do that. If, if they put that feeler out, there's 10,000 plus people in London, let's say 5,000 citizens, adults. We wouldn't want to be bombarded with 5,000 people with that. I give the administration that authority to, "Hey, here's our list." OHM can then decipher that list for the administration. It's not council's job to do that. We pass that bill, that legislation for the administration.
And, and another thing, whenever we have these public meetings with, with citizens of London, that's Morpsy's job and that's OHM's job to compile that data and say overwhelmingly, the people think we need to do this overwhelmingly, and that data is then put into the plan. That's where you're going to get that. You're getting, you're getting stakeholders, people that know to how to conduct meetings and get the process moving. They're not going to be the ultimate decision makers. It's the citizens that's going to be the decision makers. I, I mean, you're acting like these people are going to be cut and dried doing everything that they want. They're not. They have to do what the data shows, and that's going to be brought forward. That's why you guys told me to hire Morpsy to spend more money, to bring Morpsy in, because you wanted more public interaction. And that's exactly what we have done. We've done nothing different than what the committee, me, you, and Greg, said we wanted to be done in our comprehensive plan. So we followed your guys' guidelines. If you don't like it, I'm sorry, but we're following your guidelines. It's all data-driven.
Pardon me, Rex. Didn't mean to step over you. So according to what we had seen on their timeline, the, the OHM timeline doesn't include anything for Morpsy in that timeline that they published. So how many, how many more meetings are, is Morpsy going to involve the community on? Because just when we look at their timeline, and it hasn't been shared what Morpsy's going to do, so just looking at their timeline, there's a, a public interaction meeting in step three and another one in step five, I believe that's the final one.
Additional community, additional community engagement support during two planning workshops held by OHM advisors. Morpsy scheduled twelve hours. We're paying them $12,000 to do that additional work. Conduct, conduct an additional community engagement workshop to help provide additional support. I see sixteen, eighteen hours of work that Morpsy's going to do, that we're paying for, that you guys approved for me to, to schedule with Morpsy. I signed the contracts to do this work.
Okay, I understand that.
So I don't understand why, why you're berating us that we're not doing what you want when we are. We're, we're doing exactly what the committee asked.
Where Morpsy comes into play, because I didn't see it on the original schedule.
Well, Morpsy gave you what they're going to do, and then you said, "That was not enough. We want more." So we bought, or, I'm sorry. OHM gave you their initial schedule, and you guys and I agreed that wasn't enough public interaction, so we contracted Morpsy to do more.
Okay, I, so I guess, I guess the question is, we have two separate schedules. I can see one of them now.
Yeah, I got them right here if you want them. That's, I mean, you got it too.
Two separate schedules, what they're doing, what they're doing. I mean, we can, I still have, you know, the one from OHM on their original proposal, so I could see where, you know, it was step one, or phase one, phase two, um, what they were supposed to do. I just can't, I couldn't remember where Morpsy comes into play. I know we're paying for them. I know we should be given some hours, right? Wasn't that considered that they're giving so many hours?
Yeah, they've got sixteen free hours they're going to give us.
Sixteen free hours?
We get eight hours a year for free with our membership.
So we were going to get eight this year and probably eight start of next year.
Yeah.
And then we, we put an additional amount up there, up to an additional amount for more hours if we needed them.
Yeah, I'd put it all in there, because I thought that's what you wanted.
Well.
I mean, that's what I thought we agreed upon, was we wanted more public interaction. That's what's baffling me, is why we, we're spending money for public interaction, you guys saying we're not involving the public. It just don't make any sense to me.
I, I, well, obviously, this is two different arguments, because I think the first argument or the first discussion is involving the public in the steering committee, right? That, that's where Councilman Norman seems to be coming from in this argument, and I'm just asking, because there is going to be public interaction, I know that. I just don't know how many times and what all we're going to do. I, I know that OHM stated that they were going to put together a website and a survey. Quite honestly, I would like, since we're having this big discussion, I would like council to have some input on that survey, because we talked about it last year. You know, a public survey would really help this, help everyone.
I would say you need to come to the public meetings and voice your opinion, that that's what you want on there. Or volunteer to be on the committee, like the mayor asked if there was any council members that wanted to be on it a week ago, and no one said they want to, except Brent just said he wanted to.
Okay, now, if you want to correct me on things, I'm going to correct this. What, what public meeting has there been?
There's, there's, there's none, zero.
I'm sorry, what?
Zero.
Zero public meetings?
Yeah, we, we just got off.
So you're telling me to come to a public meeting? We haven't had.
In the future, Greg.
When they have the public meetings, if council wants to come and be a part of the surveys.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, I get it. Okay, can I, can I finish my questions? So my next. We'll, we'll get it to the president. My next question is, why aren't these meetings public, all of them? Other, others, other cities around are doing full, full, every single meeting is being, I mean, Columbus does it live and they record it. Why, why, why do we pick a company?
I didn't pick it. You, Greg and I picked it.
Okay, but again, do they work for us, or do we work for them? If we want public meetings, why can't we tell them, "Listen, we want all future meetings to be public"? They work for us. Or actually, I'm sorry, they work for the administration. We just gave you the money.
I, I would say probably the reason they don't want to make some of these meetings public is they want to, they want to keep the meetings down to a minimum. They don't want to have long, drawn-out meetings where people are like, "You know what? I got better things to do than come to a two-and-a-half-hour meeting to serve on this committee." They want to, they said that it, your best committees is if you keep it at an hour, at maximum, an hour and a half, max. And if you start bringing in public engagement in all these meetings, it's going to end up like a lot of our meetings will be going for two, three hours long, because people's going to want question, answer, question, answer. That's what the public engagement's for, so that you can bring them in and you're ready to do that. I think they've done this far more times. Now, if you want to make it televised or streamed live.
Or recorded.
Or record them, we can do that, but I don't, I don't, I think to make the meetings more productive, they want to keep it to where they are focused, and they don't have to get into all that public interaction until they're ready for the public meetings, which could be, you know, numerous.
And, and as I said in my email to, to you, that public doesn't mean audience participation. They can have public meetings and the audience not be involved.
You know, as well as I do, if you have the public in here, they're going to be interrupting, wanting to ask questions and stop things. That does not make for, you was at a meeting this week. Did they let a lot of interaction go in in it?
No.
No, they kept it Christ and to the point.
Exactly, but it was a public meeting.
Exactly, but it was a public meeting. It was a public meeting and they controlled it.
But that's never been done by this city. As long as I can remember, we've never been able to do that kind of a meeting. We've always allowed public interaction and the meetings have lasted forever.
Okay. Oh, I believe last summer, when we moved the meetings into here and we moved the audience away and we weren't over here in the conference room, that was a little bit better controlled and comments weren't accepted at that point until, at one point. It wasn't open, it wasn't open free-for-all during those meetings.
I would say more than often than not, you have interaction. And that was what was brought up at that meeting that we went to, is it makes the meetings too long to have interaction and they said, "We're not doing it."
So then, do I have your commitment to say that the future meetings will at least be recorded so that they can be viewed by the public?
I don't see any problem with that. I'd have to make sure that OHM doesn't have a problem with it, but I don't have a problem with it. There's nothing secret about this.
Well, that means that we'd have to find a way to get it on the city website so that people don't have to do a records request.
No, we can do that. Actually, do you know anybody that's in charge of the council's webpage?
I do.
Okay, so you know how to get her done?
Well, it has to be approved by your administrative assistant, so I don't have full reign of that council.
She'll, she'll...
So, that's it for that, but I also have a question, and this is from someone in my ward, that they're part of the Strawberry Festival, I'm not sure what their title is, but their question is, who decides to change the formatting of the downtown festivals? Who makes that decision?
That was collectively made by the police chief, myself, the mayor, fire chief. And it all had to do with public safety and the safety of the downtown.
Right, so we had the public meetings. We said, "If you're going to do a festival downtown, here's how it has to be set up. We're going to do it from High Street to First Street." Is that it? Or is it, yeah, High Street to First Street. First Street stays open. And when Strawberry Festival came to our meeting, they said, "Hey, can we go a little bit past that because we have a pony"? And the administration said, "No, you can't. You work within the perimeters that we have set. I was in the meeting, that is what you said. Now, let's fast forward to this weekend where we've made an exception, where now we..."
So, now we are leaving Second Street open. The whole thing is to leave a side street open, right? So, now we're leaving Second Street open. These businesses asked to do something down there because we were shutting it off at First Street. So, to help out these businesses, we're going to leave Second Street open, right? And it mainly has to do with, one thing is, on a Saturday, there's a lot of businesses down there that aren't retail businesses. There's hair salons, there's realtors and things of that nature, to where somebody can get dropped off on the corner and not have to walk 600 feet, 900 feet to get to where they need to go, right? And that's where, and so we're leaving Second Street open on this one. And then there's been discussions today about how we're going to do Old Fashioned Christmas because we want to be, we want to help the downtown businesses out, right? So, there's a very thin line of the retailers like them, right? Because it brings people down. The hair salons, the realtors, people like that, they might not like it as much because what it does is take their parking away and it takes away their access to their building. So, we're trying to get that medium balance and we're trying to work through it.
But you can't understand how this person from the Strawberry Fest feels jaded because they tried, they tried to have it, you know, changed and they were, you know, hardline. This is how we're doing it. It's for the safety. It was rigid. We're not changing it.
So, like I said, if they wanted to move the Strawberry Festival down and leave Second Street open, we wouldn't have had an issue with that. So, we could still have that side access open from west to east and east to west.
So, you're saying that basically it is negotiable if you do a festival downtown that you can have it moved?
I mean, we're always open. What we want to do is help the festival and make this, and help the festival out, but also make sure that we're taking care of the businesses that are down there, right? And so, that's where it's kind of, how do we do this, you know? Also, this thing this weekend is from 8:00 to 2:00 is how long the road's going to be shut down, right? Even though they're keeping Second Street open, it's only 8:00 to 2:00 on one day when you're talking about roads being closed for 48, 72 hours, right? So, that's a big difference, right? Especially maybe if it's on a Saturday or a Sunday, you know, Fridays are tough, right? People need to get their hair done on Fridays, right? You know, or go see a movie or whatever it is down there, right? So, we're just trying to figure this whole thing out. It was overwhelming that people wanted it to stay downtown, but we needed to make it safer. And we also needed to make sure that we're taking care of the downtown businesses because that's one of the main focuses of why we do these festivals. I can speak from our festival, is because we're trying to draw people downtown for the businesses.
Okay. I just, that wasn't my question, that was someone who wanted me to ask for them. So, that's it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your answers.
Onto old business. I'll let Greg handle this one.
So, moving on, fourth reading, Resolution 15924, sponsored by Shannon Trainor, accept a motion to read by title and number.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 15924, a resolution adopting the recommendations of the Planning Commission, Johnsons Creek Subdivision, parcel number 3103399001.
There's not too much to say about this other than there is a public hearing on this matter. This is for the Johnsons Creek subdivision approving their requests September 19th during the regular council meeting. Come with your questions.
Mr. Clerk, do you happen to have an electronic copy of the map that they have shared that we can have up for the next meeting while, during the public hearing portion? That's a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. There is public hearing scheduled for September 19th, 2024. We'll leave this on until that time.
Mr. President?
Okay, now on for a second reading, Resolution 167-24. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 16724, a resolution increasing appropriations. The tax department needs to replace their filing cabinets.
The filing cabinets that are requested are, I believe, fireproof, have extra security measures to protect tax files, coming up with the office renovation, request for increased appropriations to make such purchase.
I haven't heard any comments or questions from the public about this. Is anyone else? No?
Make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Yes.
Pitt?
Yes.
McDaniels?
No.
Norman?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Traynor?
Yes.
Eads?
Yes.
Motion to adopt it?
Second.
Pitt?
Yes.
McDaniels?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Traynor?
Yes.
Eads?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 167-24 is passed. Onto Resolution 168-24. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 16824, a resolution increasing appropriations. The city has been reimbursed by the insurance company for repairs to a police cruiser.
Again, this is a little self-explanatory. The city paid the cost of repair, insurance company reimbursed the cost of repair, would like to give it to, I believe this is a police cruiser that was involved with a deer strike, so it'll go back to the police department.
Make a motion to suspend the three reading rule as I know they can use the money.
Second.
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Traynor?
Yes.
Eads?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Pitt?
Yes.
McDaniels?
Yes.
Resolution 168-24 is passed. Onto Resolution 170-24. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 17024, a resolution increasing appropriations. The city administration would like to purchase the software program Civic Plus.
So, this is related to Civic Plus software. Landon McKenzie presented some material at last meeting related to this. It would help streamline and organize his department and as well, it could be used to help organize some of the city features as well. I believe the next deadline expiration date for the amount that they quoted is September 9th, which would cause it to increase another $3,000 after the 9th. So, if it goes that far, the appropriation would be for $13,088.
Mr. President?
Yes.
A couple of thoughts. I've had a chance to think about this since the last meeting. $13,088 is what the appropriate, or what the resolution says regardless, so we're not changing anything there. It's already on there. It's made me consider the fact that this is a $6,000 convenience fee. It's not convenient for us and this is a company that deals with municipalities. They have thousands of customers, according to their website, and to hold us hostage over a time period really upsets me, especially when you consider all of the different modules they have. And I think this is kind of a gateway drug, so to speak. It's the first step in. So, I don't know that the city's considered any of the other, any of the other parts that they have, but I did because I was on their website today again to look at this, which prompted a phone call from them, which I would like to, I will talk to them eventually. They do municipal websites, but they have the recreation management. I pulled that stuff up today to look at that. They have mass notification software. They have social archiving media or social media archiving, which when you read that helps them then in public records request. They have a 311 CRM system, which is, I would think is paramount to Mr. Castle's job to accept and track service requests, to promptly respond to residents' inquiries and improve engagement. Just thinking about this, if someone calls and says, "My neighbor has a bunch of junk in their yard," I don't know how Mr. Castle tracks that now, whether it's a piece of paper, if there's a computer program. But if you have a history of what's went on at a house and you know this is not the first or the third, but maybe the eighth time there's been a complaint and you can find it in one place, I think that would be a very useful tool for him. They have community engagement consulting. The one that, there's two that I think are really, well, maybe three, but the next three. So, one is called Next Request, which helps keep track of Freedom of Information Act request. It keeps it all in one place. They'll know who's asked for it, why they've asked for it, they'll be able to track that and make sure it was done. Community development, permits, licenses, inspections and contractor credentials. So, they have this. And I talked to a contractor today that just goes on and on that it's not an easy thing to do to get these, to get some of these. And the permitting system right now is a month out. They've required, they've asked for a permit and they were told it was three to four weeks to get a permit. They just don't have the time to do it, but I think this would help speed up that process. And the thing that I'm most interested at City Council is the meeting, or pardon me, agenda and meeting management. Enhance productivity and save time with agenda and meeting management. It's a system designed by clerks for clerks and I think that would really help things. So, my question and the whole reason for this longer explanation is, if we're going to go back to the well, if we're going to go look at this and see if there's anything else, I don't know that we've done any research on this yet. I don't know if there's any other departments that have said, "Hey, this would be good." But maybe we want to look at a bigger purchase and not just one purchase, one module, and get hit with a $6,000 convenience fee. And then six months from now decide we want something else and then they charge us another fee for setup. I don't know how it works. Hopefully, I'll have a conversation with someone because I was, I did inquire about the agenda and meeting management, but maybe we should be doing more research before we say yes to this because I don't think, right now, this time of the year, a lot of the rec things are done and over with, a lot of the rentals are going to slow down because it's the time of the year. I don't know that it's imperative that we do this now without doing some more research.
Basketball, we started going here soon.
Yeah, I mean, they're trying to do their volleyball and then basketball, but it seemed like from the presentation, did you get the chance to watch the presentation that landed there? It seems like a lot of, a lot of that presentation was about being able to rent properties, rent the city facilities, being able to do it right there, look at a schedule, go online, rent it, pay for it. That was a convenience for the public and this is why I'm most in favor of the program because it does create a convenience for the public. I also think it creates a convenient for, or less work for some of the staff members around here, and I'm not so worried about that part. I don't know that this is overwhelming for them. I'm sure they feel that it is, but the convenience of being able to do that. So, if you get a chance to watch that, maybe you'll watch that.
Greg, I think you maybe were not at the finance committee when Eve did have the, we got a little bit more question and answer about how the initial system would be set up. And I seem to recall a specific question with regard to the implementation of the program and then the addition of additional models or modules later on and whether that would increase the maintenance package or whatever it was. Rex, do you recall? I don't, I don't think there was an additional fee for adding an additional service once you had the package installed. You could expand it and it was a part, yes, maybe paid for that module, but part of your monthly maintenance would cover that, the addition of that other service.
I don't know that I have the exact correct answer for that, so I'm not going to address it logically. I would think it would be more, as you add modules, I think it would increase some. I don't feel...
But he's talking about an additional, like, setup fee and I don't think that was the case.
Right, once you get that set up, you're just adding modules. I don't think it's as expensive to do. I preface this, just like you have a contractor come to your house and you want something done and he says, "You know, I'm slammed. If you want it really done, it's going to cost you $10,000. But if you can wait a few months, I'll only do it for five." That's what they were saying. We're heading into their busy season. If you get it done sooner when we're not as busy and we can get this done in a timely fashion, we're willing to give you a pretty sizable discount, was what that was about. Second thing you addressed, Greg, and I commend you for going out and looking at the other modules. I appreciate you doing that. But we do not have a building and zoning department. Building and zoning is through West Jeff. They have just transitioned to a brand-new permit inspection complaint software. The whole thing is brand-new. They've only been using it, I think, for like three months. That may be part of the slowness is people's getting used to using it. A lot of contractors, you know, they don't know how to use it and they're pointing the building and zoning saying, "You need to go use this so that we can track every piece of it." And one of the things that they can track is code violations. They're putting that in their system so we'll be able to track things from when this system started moving forward. I do not think they're going to be able to put in old complaints so we won't be able to go back historically. So, their software's going to cover that. It would not, they wouldn't, they would not want to work with two separate systems in doing their permitting process. They want to stay with working one with one.
That's fine. We don't have to buy that module.
That's fine, but there are other pieces in there that was talked about that could be utilized. I agree. I think the main thing is what we're trying to do is we're trying to put something out there that's going to be beneficial for the public. Right now, the best we can do, unless we're open and they call and ask, is they put in a request to use a city facility. Not knowing whether that facility's booked or not, this software would give them the ability to see that. The request comes in, we say it's available, we send it back and say it's available, then they make their payment, everything's done. This system, they can see it's available, they can do the request, they can pay, it's all done, convenient for the citizen. Second thing with the sports registration, once you get a kid signed up for sports right now, you basically have to re-sign up your kid basically every year, filling out, filling out the paperwork and stuff. This system would maintain your children in the system and you can go, "Okay, I got Johnny already in there, registered, his birth date, grade, in school, all that stuff." You can click and say, "I want him signed up for basketball" because he's in the system, he's done. So, those are the kind of things that we're looking at, is trying to make it easier for the public, you know? And then it is going to make it a little easier on the people in here too, but they still have to run the programs. That's it.
The other question I have, the other thing I think you hit on there at the end was the kids, you know, some of these kids are in multiple programs throughout the year. So, like you said, instead of them having to fill out three different sets of paperwork if they're in three different events of the year, now you've got it on file and you can go click and put them into the thing. I think that's a...
It's a nice feature, I mean... I mean-
It's definitely a plus feature for that.
Any other questions? Our council wishes.
Well, I make a motion, we, I mean, we either want it or we don't. So I make the motion to suspend the three-reading rule, so we can save three grand if we're going to do it.
Second.
Stoll?
Yes.
Trainer?
Yes.
Eads?
No.
Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
No.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
So we're paying full price.
Okay, so Resolution 170-24 be left on.
Makes no sense.
On to new business. Ordinance 171-24, again, motion to read by title number.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 171-24. In ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption and publication of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances, repealing ordinances in conflict therewith, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. I guess that kind of explains itself, but it's based on this packet that we have here. This is the codified ordinances from the past two years, approximately, that they want to update and add to the website and into the booklet, physical book that we have with codified ordinances. Is that correct?
Well, it's going to add it to the book, but it also puts it out there to Eagles Publishing or whatever that hosts our codified ordinances. And it's really important to get the ordinances that council has approved updated and out there, because there's a lot of builders and developers that goes in and looks at regulations, which council has approved to change. One of them I would reference would be the stormwater ordinance that you guys passed, I believe, last year. It's still showing the old regulations. And then they get their plans all done, and they bring it, and they're like, "You're not following what council approved." And they go, "But it's on your website, so then what do I say?" You know? Do I make them go back and spend thousands of dollars re-engineering their plan because we didn't update our website? So it's important to keep your website updated. And I believe Jennifer said she wants to start doing it annually as opposed to twice or every two years.
So if everybody could, between now and the next meeting-
Do you want to assign sections?
I would just, I'd like everybody to just go through it. If you see something-
I did talk to the law director. She said she was going to go through it herself as well, so, I mean, you can go through it if you want to, but you don't necessarily have to.
And just to give you a heads up, like, this is up to end of 2023, so there probably is stuff in here about BPU, and that'll get changed.
Next.
Next year.
Yeah, I think that was one of the other reasons she wants to try to update them annually, because the BPU stuff is kind of outdated.
Any other questions on this tonight?
Yeah, just curious. I just hopped onto the codified ordinances for London as on American Legal Publishing's website, and it says on their website that the local legislation that they have is current through December 21st of 2023. But you look at this packet, and there's 2007 supplements that have yet apparently not been added into the current ordinances. As somebody that's researched London's ordinances myself, it's extremely frustrating to not be able to rely on a website. You have to actually call somebody within the administration in order to find out if this is, in fact, the right code section or the right code at all, quite frankly.
I don't know how those got published, because they're supposed to wait on council to authorize it to be published, so I don't know what happened.
At any rate.
Well, we did this, was it just last year?
No, it's been a couple of years.
Two years, I think. Has it?
Yeah. I don't remember doing it last year.
I don't know. Well, I only see one page with the '07, and on the backside of that, Shannon, it says 2024 replacement. So one, 678 12 possessing criminal tools, that says '07 replacement on the backside of that page.
There's one that says 210 replacement.
There are 2012s, 2013s, and 2019s.
There's some in here.
There's all sorts of stuff that should have been caught in previous years.
You ought to try to update the book with that stuff.
They're in here.
I would recommend, when you see something, shoot Jennifer an email.
See something, say something.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, the sooner she sees it, the sooner she can get that correctly.
But on all of these, when you look at the backside of the page, it has a 2024.
Replacement.
Yeah.
So we're doing it.
We always broke it down.
And a lot of it has to do with, these are two-sided pieces. So the front piece may be umpteen years ago, but the back of that page is what just got updated, so therefore, the front page is included. And that, like I said, that even makes it more fun and challenging to update the big book whenever you get to do it.
Does it may have anything else on this tonight? On to the ordinance 172-24, again, motion to read by title number.
So moved. Second.
Ordinance 172-24, ordinance amending section 1062 of the codified order.
You know, I can't, I can't, I can't hear him. Is there, am I sitting in a hole? I couldn't hear you. But, so this is basically, we're changing the rules, we're modifying the rules at the parks, for our city parks. This, when we talked about it, there was supposed to have been some amendments that I, that I'm looking at here that weren't done yet. So I don't know if we necessarily want to vote on this tonight until those amendments are made. We talked about the wheeled vehicles. We talked about putting in the exception for strollers and baby carriages. It's not been updated on here yet. But basically, once we do approve these, we're going to redo the signage and everything at all the different parks, so that everybody will see them. You know, there's some in here that I think are kind of iffy. I think we're being a little bit too, like, not being able to play the radio at the park. I think that's kind of, that's going, that's kind of overpolicing, if you ask me, because, but it's on here, that you can't have a radio playing at the park. So I would suggest that you look through it over the, I hope we don't take action on it tonight, but look through the actual list and kind of make your suggestions back to the park. And they meet the first Tuesday of the month, so you may want to attend that meeting and bring up your concerns. But that's what it is. Thank you.
That meeting was two days ago.
Right, I mean-
For this month, and it got canceled. So if you would, reach out to Landon with your-
Okay.
-questions on that, and we'll try to get that resolved for next council meeting.
But yeah. Better than that, it's for the betterment of the park.
And, Michael, it's, I don't think, this is me personally, I don't know, but I don't think it's no, no radio totally, but we've got to have that something in there that says that, because, believe it or not, we have defiant teenagers that says, "Show me where I can't do this." So if we can't show them, then they're, you know, where do we stand on enforcement? So I think that's why that's in there.
Anything else on this tonight? On to Resolution 173-24, again, motion to read by title number.
So moved. Second.
Resolution 173-24, a resolution increasing appropriations. The street department would like to purchase a dura-patcher for practice sealer.
Yeah, this is hopefully something we can all get behind. I guess they've been NINA for a couple of years, this dura-patcher. You need tools, equipment, manpower, safety, and planning to get the roads fixed.
I can't hear you.
We need this to fix the roads.
Oh, okay. What exactly does the dura-patcher do?
It'll take and force into the holes hot asphalt as opposed to cold mix, so it forms a better patch. It'll enable us to fix some sections of road where we weren't, we were not able to do it. Cold patch just continually just keeps squashing out, and this will be a hot-type mix with the sealer, the, what'd you call that, Brent?
The dura-patcher.
Yeah, but there was a tape sealer or something where it puts down hot tar to help adhere to the edges of the old asphalt and bringing in the new stuff.
Yeah, they've been NINA for a couple of years.
Yeah, theirs has been on, not functioning.
It doesn't just fill cracks, it'll actually fill some holes.
It's for potholes.
Okay.
Yeah. Potholes and probably, you know, repairs that's had to do, we've had to do for stormwater drains and stuff like that, where we have to dig in and fix drains. It's not going to do the whole street or anything, but it'll do stuff that we're probably having to pay somebody to do now, so we can get it done quicker.
And the current machine's?
Twenty, over 20-some years old, and it's just, Bill says it's just wore out. He said it, sometimes he can't get it to run at all. I don't know how it works, I'm sorry, but-
Is the street department through the $900,000 that we already appropriated earlier this year?
You want to touch on that?
What, the nine, the 900?
We didn't spend all 900, but we spent darn near all of it.
They spent pretty much all of it. They spent like $985,000, and they're just going to go through and, what is it called? Slurry? And then, what is it called?
Chip seal.
Chip seal, yeah. Because I just asked for an update from Mr. Castle. And I, so they are, and, but I haven't got the list yet.
I was going to say, I haven't gotten that for you. That has been contracted, it has not been done. And again, it's, it's a case where you've got to get in line for you can get anybody to come and do any repairs for you.
But we are going to focus on-
The worst.
Yeah, the worst first, correct, from that grading.
Yeah.
So the ones that failed, those are going to be our, our go-tos.
Yeah.
So if you didn't get to see that list, you probably have to request it from Rex, or I can send it to you. But there is a list that basically went through all of our streets and listed failed, passing, blah, blah, blah. So you can kind of look on that list to see what the roads will be that they'll be doing this year.
Were there 40-some that failed?
Forty-some that failed, I think, 40% or something.
No, 40, 40-some.
Yeah, but there, yeah.
Yeah. And it's a nice thing to take, because you click on a link for that particular stretch of road, and it'll play you the actual video, so you can see what they're talking about.
Yep. Yes, you can.
I'm going to make a motion to suspend this, so we can get this going.
Second.
Ms. Trainer?
No.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
No.
Mr. Stoll?
Yes.
Anything else on this? This will stay on. On to Resolution 174-24, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved. Second.
Resolution 174-24, resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into contract.
Yeah, this is so Rex can get a contract with the government website to get it.
By the dura-patcher?
Yeah, right. Hopefully, we can do that.
Part two.
Right.
Any discussion on this then tonight? On to roundtable. Michael?
Nobody's out there. Couple of things. I went to the Mid-Ohio Water Sewer District meeting this week, and as Rex said, it was a delight to sit there and see a well-organized meeting being ran. And I went there mainly to find out, the Third Ward had a couple of projects that, that were kind of handed off, handed off to Mid-Ohio when we did that whole big giveaway. And so I just wanted to give an update that the Olive Street project is done. It was done in June, and the reason you haven't seen any digging is because they decided to use a sleeve, which, when you use a sleeve, you don't have to dig out, you can just, it just basically puts a sleeve in there and covers all the holes. I was told by Mid-Ohio that this should stop the, they're not sure about the flooding, but at least you know that the flooding that does happen has no longer got any kind of sewer in it. It'll be rainwater or runoff. So I just wanted to give everybody an update about that. I want to go back to comprehensive plan, and I want to just say, if you're watching out there, and you are a citizen, and you want to be a part of this, that you do contact our administration and make your voice heard. I think we got, like I said, I think we got a lot of talented people that aren't connected to a business or aren't connected to an organization out here, but still live out here. You know, we, I, one thing I didn't see a whole lot of on there, and I know Susan Thompson works with those with disabilities, but I didn't see any real ADA people out there, people who are in wheelchairs. And I think we've seen a presence of that at our council meetings. We've had at least two residents come and complain about our sidewalks, how they're inaccessible, and that's something that I was looking for on that list that I, I don't feel that I see there. So again, if you are interested in serving on this comprehensive plan, I would say, reach out to the administration and let them know. Other than that, have a great week.
Good. Thank you. John?
I just want to have a shout-out to my wife. We celebrated our 49th anniversary this week. That's all. Congratulations.
Shannon?
Mayor mentioned this earlier, but the planning has started in full force for London's Old Fashion Christmas. Expect, if you're a downtown business, or a church, or a choir, or a band, or any kind of organization that wants to have participation in Old Fashion Christmas, please reach out to myself, or to Eve Freelove, or any of the members of the 1811 Old Fashion Christmas Committee. You can email me, and I will get you that information. We're trying to get a jumpstart on the planning this year, so that we can circulate a, basically a map, a schedule of events, and a flyer well in advance, so that everything has a better chance of being well attended. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, the Public Service Committee meeting is the 10th at 5:00 in the meeting room next door. I don't have anything else.
Rich?
I want to thank all of our city employees. Our job's well done. Public safety meeting will be Tuesday at 6:00 PM in the conference room, and I think that's all I've got.
Great.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out and watching from home. That's all I got.
Great.
Well, I'm glad there was a discussion about the comprehensive plan, because there hasn't been a whole lot of information's put out since the day that we approved that. This is really the first discussion I've heard about most of that. I've seen the emails that have went back and forth, I've seen the Facebook posts. In fact, I made one today, or last night. It was a little bit more of an overview than I think anything else, because it showed the phases that were coming up. And I think in there, I stressed that I think the people need to be prepared to have those discussions about things- I think the people need to be prepared to have those discussions about things they'd like to see. So if they know what's coming up, they can start to think about that and have those discussions among themselves, with family, friends, businesses, whatever, because when we have the community involvement, it's imperative that the community gets involved. It's imperative that we share that information and we're transparent about when and where and how they're going to meet, or where we're going to meet at, and, you know, the survey that goes out. I made the comment to Mr. Castle quite a while back about, we have a list of, of people we can email this to. It'd be great. And I don't know if we still have the list, because that list was compiled, I believe, by the water office, which we don't have anymore. So I don't know if we have the list. I don't know if Mr. Castle was able to, to acquire that, or if we can get that back somewhere, because we had a list of thousands of people probably that we could send the survey to and get a lot of impact on that, and I think that would be very important. And Mr. Norman, I'm saying, Lion President Norman, I think that you should volunteer as a lion's to help out at the Old Fashioned Christmas somehow. I'll be there to help out if you are.
I'll have to go back to my committee, but I'm sure we'll be there.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Just make sure he has electric for it.
Rex?
Yeah, there was one last thing that I should have conveyed during my segment earlier, and that's the sanitation department. The people in that department's been working their butt off. This week, not only had a holiday, we've had two trucks break this week. Thank you, Mr. Norman.
Sorry.
And it's required a lot of extra work by, by the employees of sanitation department. And then, actually, the street department, I inquired and asked if they had an employee that was, had their CEDL license that could come and help, and Bill was gracious to let us borrow one of his employees to come and help in the situation. If we hadn't of, I don't know where, we'd, we'd be a week behind. So just, I know we had a, I had a lot of phone calls, people calling today that my trash didn't get picked up, my recycling get, didn't get picked up, and, you know, please be patient. They're going to make probably 120% effort to get everything done. That's supposed to be done this week, finished tomorrow. So my, I want to put a thank you out to all the sanitation employees and a thank you to the street department for assisting.
Do we have any update on the injured person?
October 28th.
Is what, his last day or the day he'll be back?
Depends on whether he comes back. If he don't come back, it's his last day. If he does, that's when he comes back.
Okay, so October, he's out until October 28th?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, that's good.